All right, good evening and thank you all so much for being with us this afternoon at our regularly scheduled county council meeting. This is our call to order. At this time, we're going to ask, we're going to ask Councilman Miller, if you would, please lead us with the invocation this afternoon, Councilman Miller.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come before our citizens of Williamsburg counties. We ask you to guide our heart and soul and mind that those decisions made tonight will be beneficial not only to the county but to citizens. We ask these prayers in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Councilman Miller. All right, we have the minutes from our last meeting, from the February 5th meeting. They are in your packets. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as a matter of record?
So moved.
We have a
Miller.
Motion by Councilman Miller, is there a second?
Second.
It was second by Councilman Wilson. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried. All right, ordinances. There are no ordinances for first reading tonight. There are no ordinances for first reading tonight. We do have one ordinance for second reading. It's ordinance number 2024-01, an ordinance accepting the transfer of certain authority to the Board of Elections and Voter Registration of Williamsburg County to conduct municipal elections for the town of Lane. Is there a motion to accept second reading? We have a motion by Councilman Lee, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman McKnight, are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that this motion has been carried. We have no ordinances for third reading tonight. There are no ordinances for third reading tonight. All right, we do have one committee report, and that is from the Finance Committee, and it is from a meeting that took place on February 13th, 2024, concerning EMS and Public Works and Roads and Bridges. I'm going to do these in separate motions, if that's okay with you all. The first one deals with EMS, and it was a proposal for us to contract with one of the private transport, medical transport companies, because we're short-staffed with EMS. Now, this particular medical transport company does have a contract with us already, a franchise, excuse me, and it's first choice. Is there a motion to accept the Finance Committee's request? Because the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee had no issue with this. They are in favor of doing this. Is there a motion to accept their proposal?
I would make a motion to accept a proposal, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Floyd, is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Wilson, are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that this motion has been carried, okay? The second portion of their, of the Finance Committee meeting dealt with our roads and bridges, solid waste and landfill offices. We've had a tremendous amount of turnover in those areas, and the turnover that we've been having has been due to the low salaries that we've been paying, that we're paying our employees out there. So one of the things that we have, that we recommended is that we do away with one of the slots and take the monies from those slot, from that particular slot, and raise the salaries of all of our employees out there. We met with the Finance Committee last week and discussed this, and they, they had no issue with this as well. So we are asking for a motion from this council to accept the Finance Committee's request.
So moved, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
So we have a motion by Councilman Floyd to accept the recommendation of the Finance Committee to adjust those salaries out at Public Works, Roads and Bridges, Solid Waste and Landfill for our employees there. Is there a second? We have a second by Councilman Wilson, are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that this motion has been carried. Thank you all so much, and I know that the employees in those departments will thank you, thank you as well. All right, at this time, we're going to have an appearance, we're going to have a presentation from Ms. Gretchen Poole. Ms. Poole is the Energy Program Coordinator with the South Carolina Energy Office, and we're going to be doing, she's, she works out of Columbia, and she's going to be doing this through, this through Zoom. And we have tested this at least two or three times to make sure that it works right, so I think we're going to be okay, folks. There she is. All right.
All right, are y'all ready? Let's see.
I think they're going to turn it up a little bit more, Gretchen.
Okay.
All right, there we go. I think we're good.
All right, let's see. I'm trying to see where I can share my screen to show you everything I've got here, just a second.
Okay.
Let's see. All right, let's see. So as he said, I'm Gretchen, I'm with the South Carolina Energy Office, and I'm going to talk to y'all about solar in South Carolina. I've got some specific stuff about Williamsburg County in particular, and then just solar in general. So we'll get started. I'll give you a little background on me. I worked for what's now Dominion Energy for about 15 years in the areas of solar, energy efficiency, and demand-side management. So I'm familiar with all things energy efficiency, the solar interconnection process in South Carolina. I transitioned to the Office of Regulatory Staff, which is the body, we're going to talk about that in a second, but the body that we fall under, and worked on the regulatory side of things for almost four years, and looked at the programs from a different lens, a different perspective. And I've been in my role here at the Energy Office since June of last year. So without further ado, like we just talked, we, the Energy Office, fall underneath the Office of Regulatory Staff, and we are fully funded by the U.S. Department State Energy Program. We don't receive any state money, but our mission is to promote energy efficiency, renewable energy, and clean transportation. We do that through several different things, including technical assistance, financial assistance, education and outreach, and energy data. We are also responsible by statute for implementing the state energy plan. We're in the midst of reevaluating the one that we did previously and updating that, so that should be something that comes out soon. Our solar.sc.gov is where we point most everyone looking for information about solar. There's consumer protection regulations, there's installation and maintenance, financial information, just a plethora of things that you can find here. It's the best place to start for anybody that's looking to learn more about solar in South Carolina. So most of you are probably familiar with how solar works, if you're not. This is a good example to show you how it works. So sun strikes that solar cell, and typically, the power generated by one cell is only about two watts. But when you combine all those cells together on a panel, you can see how we can get more generation there. And I won't bore you and read all the slides to you, but, because I know y'all are, y'all can read for yourselves, but this is just a good illustration of how it works. So there's several components to solar panels. The one that most of us think about in terms of longevity and what do we do with them, are they solar cells? There has been, and we'll talk about this in some later slides, some legislation introduced that would oversee how that happens. That is some of the concern that we see and hear from consumers, is we've got all this solar generation coming online, or all these solar farms, or I have solar on my home, what happens after the 20 to 25-year life of these? What do we do with them? And how do we dispose of them properly? Right now, it's kind of like I like to say about batteries. We all know that little, small batteries that we use every day in our mouths and other places, they should be disposed of properly and, and should be recycled. But if we're honest, and I'll be honest, a lot of times, I just put them in the trash can and they go out with the trash. But that is a concern in the future. Solar panels have a metal frame, it's typically aluminum, that is something that can be recycled. And then we have the glass casing sheet, the wires, the plexiglass, the insulation. All of those things are components that at some point in time are going to come to the end of their lives, and they either need to be recycled, or a lot of times, there are some companies that will take these units apart and use the pieces, I guess, kind of like car parts. They use them to, to kind of fill in gaps where they can't find materials that they may need. So you have to have an inverter to convert the electricity that's, that's made by the solar panels from DC to AC, and then you've got several different components to that. The picture to the right kind of depicts what that looks like. It's a smaller box that just converts it once it's going back to the company who will be purchasing it or using it. And then with solar farms, just a list of pros and cons. With, from the pro standpoint, it can diversify revenue, it is a clean energy, it's quiet, there's low maintenance, and there is some workforce development that, that can be a plus. On the con side with solar farms, there tends to be an initial high cost, larger spaces are needed for solar farms, and this goes with any, not just a solar farm, but generation depends on weather. So just, if you've got a cloudy day, it's not going to produce as much electricity as it would on a full sunny day. And then like we just talked about, there's end-of-life considerations. What do you do with those panels and their components once the land, or sorry, once they have come to the end of their life? And then what do you do with the land? How do you revitalize that, or what are you going to do with it afterwards? Now, we'll move into some solar data, and this just kind of gives you an idea of where we are as a state. All this is up to date through July of last year. The slides that I'll be showing you, there's a gentleman in our office named Michael Garner, and Michael keeps track of all this data for us. But as you can see, as a state, solar installations have grown pretty, pretty rapidly over the last almost 10 years, and this is a representation of kilowatt hour, or excuse me, kilowatts in AC. So you can see back in 2014, we had, you know, 580 some odd kilowatts. Today, we have close to 39,000 kilowatts that are being produced here in South Carolina. Does 6,000% increase, for those of you that like percentages, from one year to the next, and then from 2014 to 2019, is a 12% increase. Williamsburg falls kind of low in the counties. There are, sorry, I was covering up my numbers. As a whole, as a state, there's that 38,000. Williamsburg is, and I wrote my data down because I knew y'all might ask, let me get So just as a marker, Charleston is your top county up there, and they have 5,047 kilowatts. Williamsburg has 76. And then Florence County is another one, is kind of down on the, the list, but they have 957 kilowatts. And then by sector, Williamsburg, again, most of the, the solar that y'all do have in Williamsburg County is utility scale, meaning that the utility has, has done a solar farm or something like that. It's not residential, commercial, and it's not industrial. So you can kind of see where y'all fall there, too. The 90% is utility scale. And I think when we talked previously, I think most of the county is serviced by Duke Energy and co-ops. I think, y'all correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
Moving into solar legislation, back in 2014, then Governor Nikki Haley signed Act 236. This was what brought renewable generation leasing into the state of South Carolina, and that's when we saw an influx of your, your companies wanting to do rooftop solar on homes. And that's a piece I handled when I was in the regulatory side, was the leasing applications. This also brought in the distributed energy resource programs through the utilities, and this is where they have programs available to customers for energy efficiency. They, I know here in Columbia, Dominion does one where they come to the customer's home, review their energy usage with them, and help them find ways that they could make their home more energy efficient. And Act 236 also introduced interconnection standards. So those are standard practices that all of the utilities follow when they are connecting solar to the grid. And the Energy Freedom Act replaced Act 236 when its sun set, the 31st of 2022, I believe it was. And the Energy Freedom Act is the one that introduced these consumer protection regulations. It also introduced solar choice and a bunch of other programs you can see here. The interconnection standards appear again here, and those go along with integration studies. So in large, large-scale projects like solar farms, those interconnection standards are followed, but the interintegration studies, what that is, is your utilities have what they call a queue. So if someone was looking to do a solar farm or a large project of any kind, even if it was like a commercial-sized project, or an industrial-sized project, they would have to go through an integration study. They enter the queue, the company will study what it would take for them to interconnect. So are they going to have to invest in transmission or distribution? Who's going to bear that burden and share, or share that cost? But who would it benefit? They're going to look at all these things through the integration study, and then they would move through the queue. So the queue is kind of like, I guess, like a waiting line. You get in line in the queue, and you kind of move through it in a process, and each one of the utilities have their own process for this. So big piece that y'all probably want to talk about is solar and the environment. So this is the budget proviso that I was talking about, that they introduced, that would kind of, I don't want to say dictate, but it would outline what we would do with these solar panels at the end of their life. There are several counties in South Carolina that have already started looking at these things and have some loose things in place, or they require that these types of things be included in any leases or projects that are done in their counties. But DHEC, they want you to submit, they have actually submitted, sorry, some draft regulations. They have not been made law yet, but anything greater than 13 acres is what they're looking at. They don't want to be policing everything, but there's a stakeholder group, we are a part of that here at the Energy Office, myself specifically. There's members from DHEC, DOT, there's a lot of other moving parts, and not just state agencies, there's some nonprofits, there's some folks represented by the, like Sierra Club and things like that, that are a part of the stakeholder group, trying to make sure that we're covering the needs of everyone. Do you want to make y'all aware that the DNR, the Department of Natural Resources, has the Solar Habitat Act of 2018? It's a voluntary program, it's, it's done through the Clinton Extension, and it helps farm the end of life. So it reduces solar farm maintenance, it's, they look at the soil, the surrounding environment, they're going to look at all the wildlife that could be impacted by a project as large as a solar farm. I think DNR worked with Santee Cooper on a pilot project in Orangeburg County, and that's what kind of born this program, or birthed this program, so to speak. It actually looks at all forms of wildlife, so birds, bees, deer, all kinds of things. And there's a lady at DNR, her name is Lorraine Rigan, and I have her contact information, I can pass that along, but she has, she would have additional information about this program. But that's something that we highly encourage everybody to look at. The pollinators are in particular are a big thing that they look at, the bees and the birds. And, and there are certain things that we can do, or that you can do, whoever's putting the solar farm in can do, and there are small things that will help those pollinators to stay around and not leave the area. As far as trees and solar farm, if we're looking at solar farm site preferences, of course, are going to be on top of existing human developments, like houses, buildings, warehouses, things like that. The other place is the low production or idle agricultural fields. They don't like to clear forested land because of the things that it can interrupt, the wildlife, water quality, all those, those big things that we all think of. So this information came from the Forestry Commission and a gentleman named Tim Adams. And Lorraine Rigan with DNR, they kind of work hand-in-hand with these projects, so I can get that contact information as well. They are another great resource. So I know that was a quick and dirty overview, and, and I can't offer specifics, I'm, I'm here to just kind of give you some information, and y'all can do with it what you, what you decide to do. But that is my contact information, my email and my direct phone number. If anybody has questions, or you think of something, and once you go home tonight and say, gosh, I wish I had asked that, please feel free to reach out. We're here to help, and if we don't have the answer, we will help find the answer, or find somebody who, who can find the answer. But I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have at this time, if y'all are going to open it up that way, or if you want to gather questions and send me a list of questions, we can do that, too. So, but I appreciate y'all having me, and I hope that I got you some additional information that'll help y'all make some informed decisions.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Poole. Thank you so much for your time and agreeing to do this presentation for the members of county council, and also for the members of the public that are either here with us or, or at home watching, or will be watching a little bit later on. I know we do have some questions from council, and there are a couple of council members who could not be here with us this afternoon, and they sent a few questions that I'd like to ask on their behalf. But before I get into those questions, I want to make sure that we, we go over one thing really quickly about you and the office that you work for. Again, you are a, a state employee, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And you guys really have no, you all are unbiased as it relates to anything dealing with energy, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you all don't take, you all don't take a side one way or the other, your job is just to give facts as it relates to energy.
That's the information, that's correct.
All right. So you guys do not take a side one way or the other?
No.
All right, very good. All right, so I wanted to be sure and put that on the record to make sure that, because I didn't want anybody thinking that, you know, we went out and got someone that was going to come in and just prevent, present the information that we wanted to present. You all work for the state of South Carolina, and you all are unbiased. All right. So I have a couple of questions from Ms. Councilman Eddie Woods, who's our vice chairman, could not be here tonight, but he had a couple of questions that he wanted to ask, and I think a few other council members have some questions that they want to ask. Both he and Councilwoman Hales want to know, how far should solar farms be located from a residential property?
So my experience with that is that it varies. I know in preparation for all this, I was doing a little research and looking back at some older presentations. I think the one that came to mind was Newberry County enacted some, I don't know if their bylaws or how they did that, but I think their buffer is 150 feet. I haven't seen anything much more than that, maybe 200 feet, but it's not, not a, not a large amount.
Okay. And that's from a, is that from a home, or is that from the property line of an adjacent property?
I think it's property line.
I'm sorry, say again?
I believe it's property line, but I have to double check on that.
Okay, very good. Possibly property line. All right. And you also indicated in your presentation, there was a slide that I recall seeing that stated that solar farms do not make any noise, is that correct?
I don't know if I had anything about that in there. Typically, they're very quiet, that, I think that might be the wording that is used. Yes, they're typically very quiet.
All right, that's what it said. All right, they're very quiet. All right. And let's see. Are solar farms harmful to humans, or the health of humans?
I don't have any specific research on that. And I will say, from my own experience, that I do think if they were harmful to, if they were harmful to humans, that we would not be allowed or putting them on rooftops, that people, of homes people reside in. Certainly, there, there's components, like we discussed, and all of those individually could in some way harm the environment. Like we were talking, what do you do when you get to end of life, because some of those I will say from my own experience that I do think if they were harmful to, if they were harmful to humans, that we would not be allowed or putting them on rooftops that people, of homes people reside in. Certainly, there's components like we discussed and all of those individually could in some way harm the environment. Like we were talking, what do you do when you get to end of life? Because some of those components can, if left or just discarded improperly, they could impact water or they could impact soil quality or other things like that. But as a whole, not that I'm aware of.
Sure. And even with those, you all would recommend decommissioning plans to, which, for the benefit of those who don't know what a decommissioning plan is, would be a plan on how to properly and legally dispose of those panels once that end of life term came, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Last question. Do solar farms contaminate the soil?
No, not if they're installed properly. You know, they're not, those components that we're talking about are not touching the ground. So you've usually got a mounting mechanism and then you've got, I don't know if y'all can see me, I talk with my hands, but you've got a mounting mechanism that's going to go on the ground. And then the panel itself is going to be on top of that mechanism and that's going to be where your aluminum housing is. And then the panels would actually be in that housing. A lot of solar farms now too, I'll say, they're pretty technical and the solar panels actually will move. They sense where the sun is and they will tilt and move so that they get the most out of the sun. When the sun's setting in a certain area, they're going to move. And I say that to say like if they were laying flat on the ground, they wouldn't be able to do that. So I think the biggest piece, as far as the contamination and all that, the question that you asked, no, they're not mounted on the ground. There's a mechanism that kind of holds them up, so.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions or at least none at the moment, but I'm sure that some of the members of council have a few questions for you, so we're going to open them for the members of council.
Sure.
Mr. Supervisor.
Turn your microphone on.
And we've been talking, I've been hearing you talk about the end of life and you spoke about how DEHEC has already submitted some regulations to be looked into. How long do you think it'll be before those regulations come into play?
I'm not sure. And I know that's not a good answer. I will tell you that I have been serving on that stakeholder panel for about two and a half, three years now. And the budget provizio that I showed y'all was last year. So I think we've continued to meet and modify and offer suggestions of things. I think now it's just a matter of, does it get picked back up in this session and does it get passed? So that may be something to ask your local representative, that maybe they have more of a pulse on that. I do not at this point. I know it's there. I don't know what will happen with it or when it will happen.
Okay. And my last question is, you know, you spoke also about the effects of wildlife and things of that nature and everything that's going on with DNR. So does all of that play a part in what DEHEC has proposed as a plan?
Yes. So they, along with the Forestry Commission, because I know timber and trees and all that can come into play as well, but DNR specifically looks at how it impacts wildlife. And I say that generally because when I say wildlife, I think of your typical animals people are going to be hunting, like deer or raccoons or turkeys, those kinds of things. But you've also got to consider your pollinator, your bees, your birds, and all the other species that may coexist there. And they're going to be displaced in a way. But DNR has worked with Clemson Extension and that program is a lot more robust than it was several years ago. So with the growth that we've seen in solar, especially the utility scale solar that we've seen, that's something that utilities seem to be more cognizant of, is having a diverse portfolio, but that portfolio has to include some type of renewable. And I think as a whole, they're embracing that a little bit more and so we've seen more of that.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilman Miller. Thank you for your time and effort. I have one question. Solar farms have been around for a while and it seems as though the cost for utilities still going up. At what point is this supposed to go back down to where we can ease the cost on our citizens and our customers?
Well, I'm not sure. I mean, I can't speak for the utilities themselves and I don't work on that side of things anymore, on the regulatory side of things, but I do think, based on the information that we get, they're trying to balance the needs of customers as well as federal and some state things that have been put out there that they're having to meet. Be it, you know, they've got to meet certain EPA guidelines to make sure certain things are clean or cleaner than they used to be. And there's a whole mechanism on the regulatory side of things, on certain things they can collect back from customers for doing those things. So to answer that, I'm not sure. That might be more of a conversation to have with a representative from one of the utilities and help, they could probably help y'all to understand a little bit better how that's all structured and when they expect the price to settle, so to speak, if there is such a thing. I'm a customer too, so I feel your pain.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
What are your thoughts on property values? How it's going to affect these property values?
Did you hear that? You have to turn your mic on, Ms. Councilman. His question is how will solar panels or solar farms affect property values or will it have effect on property values?
That I do not know. That is something that I will have to let you know for sure. I do know that, I think as we taught in preparation for this, that, you know, what some of these people are offering to lease the land or purchase land for use as a solar farm is a lot more than what people would normally get to farm the land or even build on the land or hunt the land or do whatever else it is that they want to do with it. So I don't know property value long-term. I don't have information about that, but that's definitely something I can get and get back to you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Ms. Poole, Sam Floyd, I just have one question. I've been checking off the questions you've been answering and the only thing that I see that kind of jumps out at me is one of your regulations to address was the hazardous waste issue. You are referring to the afterlife disposal of the solar panels and that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Is there any other hazardous waste issues concerned with a solar farm that you're aware of that we need to be concerned of?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? And I've got one follow-up, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. All right. I've got one follow-up question, Ms. Poole. Now, the location of these solar farms, they can't just be placed anywhere. They need to be somewhere close, I think, to a utility companies. I'm not sure what you call that. What is it?
I think I know what you're asking.
Transmission.
The transmission and distribution.
Thank you, sir. Transmission line. So they need to be close to a transmission line of a particular utility company, correct?
Typically, yes. That's when we were talking about those studies that they'll do, excuse me, the integration study, the utility will look at all of that. So just as an example, I know that there was a project here in Columbia not too long ago, when I was on the regulatory side of things, and the utility company was going to have to make some pretty substantial upgrades to their transmission and distribution in that area to be able to accept the project. And so they had to say, okay, if this is what y'all want to do, that's fine, but you're going to have to pay to help with the transmission and distribution. And that's a decision that the company that's installing the solar farm or the person or whoever has to ultimately make. I won't say it has to be near it. They can build it, but it may come with a price.
But typically, they try to find properties closer.
Typically, they try to cite them where it's close by, yes. And there's not a huge expense like that.
Right. Okay. All right, anyone else? All right. Ms. Poole, on behalf of the members of the Williamsburg County Council and the residents of Williamsburg County, because we have quite a few people that are interested in this information, we certainly want to thank you for your time and thank you for being with us this afternoon. Now, you have been doing this quite a bit at different counties across the state, correct?
Yes. This is the first one I've done for a county, but I know previously there's been one for Newberry County. I'd have to get a list of the others, but there are several, yes.
Okay, very good. Well, again, we want to thank you for your time and thank you for your information.
You're very welcome and please reach out with any questions or follow-up that y'all may have, okay?
We certainly will. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Y'all have a good evening.
All right, you too. All right. Next on the agenda is executive session and we do not have anything to discuss in executive session. There is nothing to report as it relates to the county supervisor's report. Do any of the members of council have anything that they would like to report? Any member of the council have anything that they'd like to report? Or with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Supervisor.
We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Wilson. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Floyd. Are you ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion has been carried. Thank you all so much for being with us. Our next council meeting will be Monday, March 4th, 2024. Again, that's Monday, March 4th, 2024. You guys have safe, we pray that you have safe travels on your destinations on your way home. Thank you all so much.